This meeting to order at 6:00 PM, December 4th, Dune City Council, ready to pop for me. We have Melissa Simpson out, excuse absence, and Tom, potentially, please. Everyone else here, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda. Has anyone proposed revision or adjustment or anything, they're taking order? Okay, any additions or deletions or discussions? Okay, need a motion to approve the agenda.
So, my, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Oh, listen, favors?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, next item is announcements and correspondence.
Yes, so Central Lake and PUD, I just wanted to update you. So we looked at a contract a couple of months ago, and the attorneys are still reviewing that. Another thing that Central Lake is reviewing, the mayor and I have looked at our list of charges for our streetlights, and we had about 10 that were ornamental lighting. And so I had asked if we could, what the cost would be to change those ornamental lights to regular lights. And they're thinking that it might just be more easier, really, to just charge us for standard light instead. So he's looking into that and looking back to us.
Thank you. For those of you not familiar, there are, we didn't know this until we went through the bill, they're at a higher rate, and it is basically the mast arm with a little curly Q on it. So I've seen ornamental lights that are quite ornamental and have enough charge. These are not very ornamental, but we pay, but we can't figure out who requested an ornament. One of them is their parking lot light, right here. It's on a wood pole with a little scroll underneath the mast arm, and it costs like $10 a month extra or something for that scroll. Forever. So they can have scrolls back. I think the smart mommy has abandoned the scroll and charged us the lower rate.
Yeah, it'd be about $15,000 a year.
Right.
And then second, in your packet, there was the population estimates.
Yes.
So this was given to us by Portland State University.
And for our use, this is just for our use, right? They certify the results, and it's out there for public use where it comes up. We have this requirement with the current plan, what's our current budget, I mean, that sort of thing.
Another one is that the League of Oregon Cities is having a city day at the Capitol. It's on January 28th of 2025, at 9:00 AM in Salem. And so they, it's for city officials all around Oregon. And the League of Oregon Cities is going to have presentations all throughout the day. And if you're interested, registration is at the OregonCities.org website, and it started yesterday. And there are scholarships available on that website as well.
Yeah, somebody really wants to go. I've done this in other places, you know, they usually have a bunch of meet and briefs with their elected officials, and they'll ask your opinion about, you know, your biggest challenges and that sort of things. And the scholarship opportunity is great because it's a long drive to Salem, and it's all day, and they will, if you get the scholarship, they pay for meals and a room and put you up there with, you know, I don't think they recruit all of us, but if somebody really wants to go, that's a meet opportunity. You know, that line is out here, do whatever you want.
And then also, what's happening, a lot of trainings going on because of all of the election and stuff. So there's an elected essentials class. It's going to be on February 5th, 2025. It's an all-day adventure, so it's from 8:15 to 5:00. And I actually already signed up for that, and we can do it virtually, so we do not have to go to Salem for that. So I didn't know if anybody else wanted to be a part of that. Where are you going to give the facts?
Do you have a break up or anything?
Um, I do, actually. Some of the topics are how to achieve high functioning city council, what city officials need to know about Oregon's public records law, public meetings in Oregon, what the law says, and best practices, understanding your legal obligations under Oregon's ethics laws, and legal powers and kind of affecting elected officials.
What time is that?
It is from 8:15 to 5:15.
And we have a council meeting?
We do.
Is it, is it on the coast?
It's gonna, I, I signed up for it, and it's virtual.
Virtual? That's better. So it's in Salem or online? And there is, were you going to talk about the ethics and over-meeting law class? Because there's going to be a lot of overlap of those. You kind of like go to one or the other.
Yes, so I also put in for today, again, plus trainings happening, this first year and elections. Chris and I actually attended a government ethics class on Monday, and I reached out to the same lady to see if she can come here and teach. She also does a public meetings law, and so I did schedule it for all one day, but she hasn't gotten back to me as to what date that would be. But she did say that she is busy January, February, so it most likely will be March.
Just, just that, I don't know if you're, yeah, a year and a half ago, wasn't it? She came down and we actually had it. Good. And they did one before the election results were announced. For those of us that have writing candidates, we didn't know who to notify, because it was, what, the Thursday before the county gave us the results on Monday.
Yes, well, it was actually just Monday. We had it on a day, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, there's been a couple of them that you can sign up for. And they said recommended for new elected officials, like, I don't have the results yet, you know, not sure who to call. Anyway, yeah, it's ongoing. But we do know, sort of, yeah. Yeah, we're in the process.
And then the last thing that I have was just our January council schedule, because the first meeting would actually be on New Year's Day. And so I didn't know if we wanted to still be two that month, because there's a lot going on, and maybe do the 8th and the 22nd.
And the 22nd is the date we could have the water master's office here for a presentation? So she's booked up, and the 22nd was the date she could do. So right now, we're either just one meeting on 15th, or we're two meetings on the 8th and the 22nd, we get water master for the questions on water rights, and that's sort of down to 22nd. And you're?
I planned on the 1st and the 15th, and so I booked a trip for the 23rd and the 22nd, thinking I would be here for the meeting.
Good for you.
You can just switch them, so.
Okay.
But I'm glad the 1st and 15th doesn't add, it's New Year's Day, really, there's nothing going on that night.
All right. And if we were 8th and 22nd, you're okay with the 8th, just not the 22nd?
Yeah. But if it's the 1st and 15th, or the 8th and 15th?
I think the 8th and the 15th are an option too, just move the first because of the holidays, leave the other one on the 3rd, but we can't get to the water master's office, isn't available. So, and that was a question from the previous meeting. So.
I'd say we need to kind of accommodate the water master. She's going to take the time to be here to answer your questions.
If that was, and it was Melissa's question, who's out sick, but, yeah, I'd agree. Then you'll be excused. Pretty cool.
So I will have, able to ask her any questions I have, but unless I break them down and give them to you?
Call me, be careful.
I will be out of the country.
Oh, good for you.
You can go to me. I'll make sure.
Yep, yeah. All right, so 8th and 22nd, or January's. And then, I believe the swearing ins will be on the first meeting. We should have all the information and we'll be ready to proceed with the swearing ins. All right. Anything else? Okay, item six, since input on items not to be discussed on our agenda tonight? Do we have a sign in list? Okay, we just have one to sign in, Jeannie Jackson.
Hello?
Hi.
Jeannie Jackson here. I just wanted to follow up on the letter I sent you, and to say, what I didn't explain to you is what occurred during that meeting that so concerned me not being able to speak to them after the meeting, because a lot of new things were said. For instance, a long time ago, they had pretty much ruled out that we're doing multifamily housing. And they talked about, well, that, that isn't happening, if it does happen, it might have to at least be on four acres. Suddenly, it's, it can happen on the floor, one acre, four units on one acre, with parking lot, four more cars, and an accessory dwelling building. And everything was completely changed from what I've heard over the course of, I've attended their meetings for a long time now, since 2016. I started attending their meetings, and the two members that particularly frustrated me were the two that had been with the planning commission that long. And suddenly, they were saying things they've never said before. And I, I asked the simple question after the meeting, why? Why the sudden reversal and everything? You yourself said you would not want to live next to one of these units with four people and all these cars. And now you're saying it can happen on just one acre? What happened? So there was a lot of talk about water. And water, as was addressed in the last, one of the last meetings you were here around, Quiro, you had talked about, well, there's no hurry on that, we can deal with that later. Suddenly, everything's an emergency. I would like to know why. What has changed at Dune City? Is there some big building project or something offing that suddenly this must all happen now? And it was so important that, you know, I had to be screamed and sworn at. So, and he was very urgent about the fact that this had to be done now. He's doing it for his mayor. He didn't care what citizens have. And that is directly in opposition to what I've heard in the past. And it was very concerning to me. So I think any of you would have stood up too, had you not understand the reversal of their views. And that's the same questions I did. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who want to speak about anything on the agenda? Dee Millman, who'll go on at 7:00? We have an executive session scheduled tonight, so I'm going to recommend we just all go to the back room. So I have a script to read for the record, so it'll be recorded, and then it'll show the time and date stamp when we return. Any action will be taken in here, so. Dune Council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of the six-month review of Lila Timmons, city administrator. The executive session is held pursuant to Oregon revised statute 192.660, section 2, paragraph I. This executive session was noticed, I believe, December 3rd, 2024, per Oregon revised statute 192.660, paragraph 2, letter I. Any representative of the news media and any designated staff persons will be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to stay in this room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously stated. No decision will be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and come back into this room. Don't sit down, we're going to move to executive session. So with that, let's run next door. We ended the executive session at 6:32. We're back on the record. This was her six-month review. I'm going to motion to extend your contract for a year and give you a 5% decrease of your salary.
My second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. All right, that takes us to the eighth of B, a discussion on fees for street maintenance. And that might be kind of an incomplete title, but we've been doing a little research, and one of the possibilities, we get some gas tax that comes back to us for road maintenance, but you could have a, sometimes have a, like an environmental fee for street sweeping, you could include street lighting and things like that in that, if that was the desire. So right now, our, streetlights are all maintained by the power company. We pay a power, but what we pay a monthly, it's power and maintenance and the land. So we go through them for maintenance, but we know how much it costs, and you brought. You could have, you know, a proper fee or maintenance fee or whatever. So some communities have for lighting and street maintenance, some call it environmental, for like street sweeping and ditch cleaning and things like that, keep trash and whatever from getting into the storm drains and carrying into the watercourses, and so. And I don't think we are going to solve anything tonight, but that's the idea for that. We can find model ordinances or model resolutions, wherever they are out there, if anybody wants to pursue that. So it's one of the questions, you know, with paper services, right? If nobody wants to vote for a tax, but the city can assess those properties that are benefiting from this and say, here's your, here's your $20 bill or whatever it is. The only, the only thing we bill directly is reading meters, right? Water meters?
Ah, just the water, the water administration fee. That's the only thing that we.
Okay, okay. Any discussion, any questions? Stop, that is close to Christmas. All right.
It's going to be, I have thoughts.
Yeah, that's why we brought it, yeah. We're out beating the bushes and, you know, I didn't, I'd never heard of it either, but. And then the next is C, Water Quality Committee or Water Committee? So it's a standing committee of the city. It's, I think, six, six citizens, or six members, one is a council member? Is what our, I think it's in our rule handbook, you know, it's one of the identified committees. So a number of things have happened over the years between COVID and submitting the plans to the state. So much of what the committee did was in support of the state's requirement to test surface waters for the health of the lake. And the state has not gotten back to us on.
They have, they've given us some information, but it still needs a little work.
So one of the questions is, should we do something at a local level? Yes, please. And Susan, for those that don't know, is the chair of that committee.
All right, I don't know, five, six years now, I don't know how long. My husband coffee trunks. The water in our lakes belongs to the state of Oregon. The Water Quality Committee was doing testing for the state of Oregon on the health of lakes. We were volunteers helping the state keep an eye on the lakes. The name of the committee says we are doing something about water, which really we weren't. The activity the committee was doing, the sampling and taking readings for the state. The committee does not test for purity of residential drinking water. The committee was never a sitting committee, but a committee of action. Volunteers went out in boats, took measurements, collected the data and water. The readings we saw were sent to the state, and the water was sent to a lab for testing. The readings we took were temperature, visibility in the lake and water samples. The lab then sent the results of their tests to the state. The state never provided Dune City with any reports that I saw. They were all on the state side. The state would say whether or not though things look good at the lakes and let us know. In all the years I've been a part of the committee, the lakes have always looked good. There are always potential times of blooms, and if we see evidence of these, the state comes out to test them, to test the lakes, just as they did this year. Then they report back to us, and we let the residents know if there are any issues that we need to tell our residents, just like the mayor put it on Facebook this year when it turned out the water might be a problem for dogs. I think Water Committee is a better name. We can then make choices about if we want to continue testing the lakes for the state, testing lakes for ourselves, or not at all. We, of course, have to look into potential costs of what the lab would cost and see if we have funds or can get funds to take care of that. The Water Committee would still not be testing for residential use. Residents must test their own water to know if water is within acceptable health limits. While the committee has not tested for the state since COVID hit, the lakes have been tested by one of our residents and sent to the state. He copies the city on what he finds, and I've reported his findings in council meetings for the last several years. So renaming of the committee is just a start, and then we would need to get some volunteers, because why excess six, it takes more than six to test at the lake. So I would motion that we at least change it to Water Committee.
So. So why do we put the responsibility on residents to test for quality? That would be weird, I mean, because I live down how to test for my own quality.
You, you send it into a lab. You take a water sample, you send it into a lab. We do not count tests because of the variety of places where residents get their water. Some are from the lakes, some are from wells. There's no way we can test all the different places they, their water comes from.
Right.
All we test is the health of the lakes. And that's a speculation, but we can.
You would say he doesn't know the lot, hang on a second. So, so they have a lot of ability to test. Hang on a second, in the industry, you've got point of origin, like test the lake, test the stream, whatever, and point of use. So for drinking water, you should be testing point of use. And because we don't have a municipal system, there are a couple of community systems within the city. So those are operated by Oregon Water Service, or one of those third parties that has a water operator. And so at the end of the day, if you really want to know what you're drinking, you should do that. You can get those kits, like at Lowe's, where you fill a bottle and you mail it off to somebody and then send them the results. This is something state law requires to test surface waters of the state. It's a state requirement, and the city, I guess, in the 60s volunteered for this, I believe, goes way back.
It's just the health of the lake, it's not lending you a probability.
So it's indicative, right? If the lake, if you've got a huge algae bloom and it's toxic, it's, it should be concerning, right? Because you know you're drinking that. If you have the right filtration, then you'll be fine, but if you don't, and it turns out a lot of people don't. They have no idea, I mean, we've got people that report, they have zero. And it smells funny sometimes. And then we have people that have, you know, multiple stages and, so. And those community systems usually have some, some sort of requirement that there's UV and or chlorine, something to show that that was disinfected, because they, they serve more than, I think in Oregon, was it 10 or 12?
12.
Yeah, dozen connections, you're obligated to do that, so.
So we, I'd get a group of citizens that are doing the job for the state and not getting paid for it?
Yes, there has been a group of citizens for years, working for the state as volunteers.
Then why do we continue to do something for the state that the state obviously doesn't care about? Because they haven't reported anything, they haven't reported anything back to us, or?
Well, no, they goes on their, the Oregon website, but they don't send anything back to us for doing the work for them.
Yeah.
But there is value in knowing the health of our lake, for what we believe that the state, it's something that most citizens care to know.
Yes.
But what happens if it's unhalted, whatever that means?
If the state's not doing it? Well, yeah. I've been on the Water Committee since for about six years, and this is what I discovered is, in all of the testing of Woking, they've never had a problem, ever. So they need to put that out first, they've never tested a problem there. When they did do a, a big test, the paper test on the lake, the things they found out that were a problem, for the fecal matter from the fowls, the geese, and prescription drugs. But we're not going to do it, people are going to take the prescriptions, and you try and get them to stop dumping them, but you're not going to do much about that. But it's not, it's not a serious problem, and none of them have been reportable problems from our testing. On Silcoos, they've had one time to have blue algae situation, it was about 15 years ago. And it comes out for a few times in about August, September, then it cools off and we drain the dam and it goes away. But there wasn't reported, and it's mainly over in Keachel Arm. That's the only problem that had the problem. So everybody's panicked, Lake White, because we don't give them the information. It's over Keachel Arm, does it have anything coming in or going out? But overall, Silcoos Lake testing has been very good. It just gets algae, that's what you're telling you, it's there in either August or September, and then it goes away in October. But for the testing, back to Rich's question, it's like, you need to tell the citizens, it's like going to the doctor and he's giving you sugar pills, just see boat, you feel better about it. It, it doesn't do anything for them when they're drinking water. But the state know that it's good for the salmon and for the water fountain, for recreation. Now, if you test it, it's just to make them feel better, there's nothing really gained from it. You know, and we got, the two tests, the steam, the steam test, the input on Silcoos Lake, and it's good, that pretty well guarantees that Woking's okay too, because the water's coming out of Woking there, right there. So if you test that, you're about done.
What do you mean, what do you mean the input?
You test, he's testing over Silco where the water comes in out of Woking. You know, by Darwin's area over here, the West Lake area. If you test in that area of Silcoos, you pretty well know how Woking is. If that's good, Woking's good, because the water just came out of Woking.
Yeah. But, I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't test the input of Silcoos Lake, because there's, what, one, two, three, four, five, five different inputs, basically, in essence, to supply the lake?
It, it does not.
For the state, we were testing in six or seven places on each lake. And it took two groups of people, three to four people on the boat, and out for three, four hours, and then it took them coming back here and working to do testing and getting things ready to go to the lab and stuff, another three hours.
But it just, it's, it's made you feel good. I mean, the state of Oregon, most of the division of the water is, it's a responsibility that we can test it, it's just, it's like going to the doctor and talking to him, well, he gives you a sugar pill, if it makes you feel better, go ahead.
I don't know all the reasons why, I don't know. I wouldn't keep it going for the state, they're not paying us and they're paying for it.
But. We were paying actually to do the testing.
It was costing us money to volunteer to the state.
Right. But I think from a city perspective, I don't know what the regular, were it a monthly, you were doing it, a quarterly?
Well, there were certain months that we did it. We didn't usually do it during the winter, because we didn't send people out.
We did it like June, July, and August.
Usually sometime between March and October, we did go out, and it was once a month.
What, yeah. What were you paying out of your own pocket for? Shipping, chemicals?
Actually, we were, the Dune City had, gave us a small budget, and we paid for the containers to ship stuff to the lab, and the ice and things, because it had to be shipped in certain temperature to go, and so all that stuff, Dune City was paying.
Were we buying the state, were we buying the chemicals, or was the state?
The state would send us the chemical, that we.
The boat, the gas, all that was.
The boat, the gas, was all volunteers.
Yeah, so I wouldn't want volunteers to come out of pocket or anything, but like, an annual test would be nice to just have on the book, because I wouldn't, I would want to, would not let them stop doing it in years later, we realize they're the problem.
Well, we have somebody still testing the lake, and he sends it to the state of Oregon. Well, we have somebody still testing the lake and he sends it to the state of Oregon, but he sends us a copy. So we know what is happening right up.
He's only, he's only testing a couple of operations, alright.
So.
Yeah. He's not testing the normal six obligations, like.
We are doing all.
We used to test.
So we have an idea of what's going on.
Right.
But I'm just, it, it's something we want to continue doing. I don't want it to stay water quality because it's really wrong. It's a misnomer and I think that gives the wrong name to our residents.
They should say the Oregon testing.
No, because we don't test Oregon.
But Doom City associated with any of it. Because you're testing for Oregon.
That's if we continue testing for Oregon. If we do that, then I have to finish the SAP that they desire and have to do the test that they desire. And then they will give us equipment to do the test if they have equipment available. Otherwise, if we want to do testing, we have to come up with our own equipment because all the equipment went back to Oregon when it was calibrated last year and we did not send it back.
Well, I would say if they want any information, they need to provide the equipment. Otherwise, the information would stay here at Doom City and they can back sand.
Well, they have the one volunteer that sends them information. If he wants to send them information, that's fine.
That's his business.
Yeah.
They either provide the equipment or.
But in order to provide the equipment, I have to have a paper SAP for all the procedures, where we're gonna, where we're gonna stop on the lakes, how deep we're gonna go, what, you know, what tests we're gonna do and I'll write now in complete detail for them and then they'll pay.
So why, why don't they give us the information that they want?
It doesn't look that way.
I don't think they really can. The one, the one test I would recommend is they, we have a test where they drop the closed container all the way down the bottom and open it. That thing will take your fingers off. I don't recommend any volunteers to do that.
It's got a automatic snap on it and it'll snap.
If they get stirred, it'll take the fingers off. You're sampling your fingers?
Yes.
Yeah, I even come down to Wohin now.
Yeah, at this point, right. Because it's, it's a couple of years now, right? Since you started on this new procedure and the equipment.
It's been, we stopped in COVID. It's been since COVID that water quality stopped, regular testing.
But, yeah, I, I think when I started doing this and I realized it was just for the state and we weren't paying money out, you get the state information, I really felt it's not something we need to do. If the state wants information, you know, or things look funny, we know what to look for for algae blooms. We can say, hey, we think there's something.
Yeah.
They've reported and they have to send somebody out and test it.
And then sent us the results. And a fisherman. So I got that report and he said, he was worried about his outboard more than the residents. But he put a bucket of water and he said it was pea soup green right where he launched, where he parked the boat. And then there was a green slime on top. And so.
That's, that's every year.
Yeah.
That's, that's not, that you gotta worry about.
The wind, the wind was doing all that because that's why it piled up. And they said, we call it the, what is it? The soup and the scum? Right? The soup is the pea green. He's like, that's harmless and then we worry about scum if it's got that bluish tinge. And they said both were, both were nothing. And it was late, like first week in November. It was really late for years.
Late.
And they said.
But it was warm this year.
Caused by the wind because it all piled up on that shore at the time. And he was from out of town and he didn't like it in his outboard.
I mean, it's hard to call the state. Every single year since I've been here, e- even in the wintertime, you know, when, when the prevailing winds push right up into our property up there, we tend to get slight bits of blue green algae.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, it might be there for a week, it might be there for two days.
Doesn't last long.
It, it doesn't, doesn't last very long. And there was one year, I think it was the second year we were here, we were sitting there in a boat launch with our boats running, trying to push that stuff out of the, the area because it was that bad that year. I think it was in 16, if I remember right. But I remember pretty bad that year.
Which year I remember was like, I think it was 2010, that's the one they.
I mean, it wasn't near as bad as it was back then, but I mean, that was the worst that I've seen since we've been here ten years.
It was, it was more in the arm of the, especially if it keeps the arm. It was, there's a lot of it there.
Yeah.
So with this discussion, are we discussing, taking the word out, killing the whole program or expanding the program to be bigger?
I think we're open to discussion.
Yes.
So I'm seeking, one of the primary missions, primary missions of the disordered area is marine safety. Who had a chem, his PhD, he's an expert witness for government agencies for containment and food. It could be, I mean, if people don't want to volunteer, we're worried about volunteers who've got the boats, who can have that equipment. It's primary mission that some people could get awards for and not always. So if they want to use another entity to juries, that doesn't sound like it's the problem though because people are willing to volunteer.
We used to have lots and lots of volunteers. I now have one volunteer and one they've called it, and that I've talked to who is willing to help out. But the problem began when there was a division between who would go on Silcoos and who would go on, on Wohin because there were Wohin people who didn't want to be on Silcoos because that was scumier.
Right.
And so.
We always tease Silcoos.
Well, this wasn't teasing. This was real reality, real being so. And really wouldn't even talk to the people. So we had to get separate boats and separate things. Water bottles and everything. It was horrible. So I don't want to do that again. I think that is, that's why I kind of.
No, if that's an opportunity, right? If it fits the mission and.
Right. Because we don't take catastrophic missions up here, like some areas where you have a little spill. That, and so it's a whole thing we can't do by trying to build that program here. And it could be a door kicker because like in one PhD does this, this testing labs and right, multiple countries.
Yeah.
But that's why I was asking if we wanted to go further and test our own for clearly a quality thing for our citizens and service. So that could possibly be done fairly easily. I don't know if testing equipment has that cost and.
It's fairly expensive.
Yeah.
That's why we were getting it from the state.
Type of equipment is required, I guess. I mean, you know, you talk about testing water. I mean, take water, you go and take a bottle, dip the water.
They had a temperature sensor, they had a, let's see. The other one was just a little setchi thing that would tell you how far you've been down.
Yeah, setchi is, that's true.
We had the.
Those are cheap.
But then, then coming inside, they had chemicals where you would put in chemicals, it was a dial indicator.
And they have a big machine for that now. It's all done electronically. So there's no chemicals. Because our volunteers did not like handling the chemicals.
And I don't see their microscope. What else? There was two, two lab tests in here before you sent it off, six water containers.
We have all the containers and stuff still. But the basic things that we give before sending it off to the lab was the tests that had used the chemicals that we quit doing in Oregon states. So they have one stop, digital one that does it all. But they don't have enough to go in. The temperature sensor, that's pretty easy to get. The sketchy is pretty easy to get. We had a little turbidity machine and that shouldn't be too bad. But those basics that, we could do that, but that, that's all it would tell you is temperature and turbidity in the water and invisibility.
And Steve would get in the microscope, just tuck it for Michael or whatever.
He was, he's a biologist and he would do all the microscope and he'd tuck, and he does that now, now for the one spot that he goes to. So I don't know if the other information of temperature and visibility is what people want or is it?
Well, the visibility was for clarity and that's the first indicator that you've got something going on. And when last month you could see twelve feet down and this month you see three feet down.
And then we do turbidity, actually see what's in the water. So.
See if it's just still run up dirt or something else somewhere.
That, that water clarity can change. It, I mean, if a rainstorm, I mean, a rainstorm can change it just boom, for sure. But I mean, I, I've seen that guy. I mean, he's came over and used our dogs several times over the years. And he's got talked about this very rarely, it's on a rope to go down.
That's all.
Different colorations with different numbers on it. I mean.
Like an eye test when you can all oversee it.
Yeah.
That's it. That's exactly it.
It, it was funny when, I'll have to tell you this funny story. When I first started with it, you know, it was all older guys. And I started doing that test. They said, oh, this dude didn't even do that one. And he's going, I can't see it anymore. And I said, I still can. And he goes, well, your eyes are better than ours. So you can see it farther. So it all depends on the person that's looking at it.
It's supposed to have 2020 vision if you're doing that test. So related, no promises, but I talked to Boomer Wright, right before the election. And we traded emails, you know, I congratulated him on being reelected. And he said, I got an infrastructure bill I'm working on. Do you have a request? And he ended up sending me some forms specific to water. He's looking to make a list of water related. So we don't have a municipal system, but we could request, you know, we want a sample for our community because two thirds of our residents are on surface water and about a third are well water. We just come up with a list. The bummer is, I think I had to send it to him by the 18th of December.
Which all, all the wells in this area are all affected by lakes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, so, I mean.
And the further away are the longer it takes. But sure, we're all drinking the same water. It's all rain.
It, it's all affected by the quality of the lakes and the waves.
Well, that's why I bring it up. We could say, we don't have a municipal system, but all of our residents are basically, you know, groundwater and lake water, which is the groundwater, lake water that's in a shallow well, you know. Or I don't mean it's a short trip to the stand, but we could request, you know, we could put a number in there and say we want to outfit our own for lab for water testing for the city as a potential request.
I like concerns you're taking the liability over something you don't.
No, 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 no.
But you don't sample in anybody's house.
You don't say, this is representative sample.
But you don't know the water. Why would you do that?
You're responsible to the citizens. You're just giving them some information.
That's the Oregon State Org's responsible, the city.
But they're not doing it. So we could. Or you could put on there, I just want Oregon to do their job. I don't know if that would make an infrastructure bill.
It all depends, I guess it all depends on whether or not you want to see this continue. If you think that this is something that is violent and that you think that it should continue, then. But it's now frankly 10 years, right?
We've, we've got by since 2019.
Have, I have one person with a boat and one person that's willing, but it really takes more than one person. And my husband and I were doing it for years and it's, it can get very monotonous to do it. But my point is if all we can do is temperature and visibility, is that a bit?
Well, it's, it's easy to do. That's not my problem. My point is, is you need to take a sugar pill.
If those are the only thing we're measuring out, I think it's worth it. If we were doing chemical tests for metals and things like that, it'd be nice to know.
That makes your.
Yeah, so we're not going to go to that extreme to really understand what the lake is. We're doing daily tests. I don't think we're.
I guess if we had a committee that was basically just doing general observation of clarity, you know, how's the water look? You know, does it look like there's turbidity? Does it look like there's blue green algae? You know, and just a general committee that's going to take an overall look at the wave. And then there's a document that to a point that, you know, you've got something to kind of follow with. And then if things start changing, then you can address that to the state and say, hey, we're seeing these types of things. That's not really going to cost you any money, but you still have some kind of a following of what the lake is going to do or what it's doing.
And there's some of us that know what to look for. And usually voters when they're out will say, hey, I saw this over there.
Yeah.
And then we can go double check it and make sure of what it is that.
Yeah, the one fisherman must have known somebody because he was either pulling his boat out or launching it. He didn't really call because they were, I got the whole chain of emails. It's kind of funny, you know, who reported to who and then they called. I mean, it was like 20 emails.
Stephen had told them he had reported it too. And that's the chain of emails I got was he had reported it and they came out and tested it.
Yeah. That's a good point. You could do some real simple stuff and say clarity's gone way down and it's.
Right.
It's, it's got that sheet on the surface.
The metal hat went during rainy, rainy weather. That's why we quit testing when it rains and during the winter.
Right.
You can't see anything anyway that's due to the rain that's just clearing up all the water.
Yeah. I mean, you could do like pretty simple, once every, once a month or once every two months, general observation or whatever.
But don't, don't make it.
It gets to the point to where, you know, there, there's something that looks seriously wrong. You force the state to do their job and take care of what's going on or figure out what's going on. And then that way they're spending the money instead of Doom City or the general, or you personally.
Well, the biggest concern is like June, July, August, September. That's the main ones where you want to check it.
I just feel.
I haven't seen, I haven't really seen algae.
Spending money.
Seriously, our side of the lake except for August, September, October.
On the north end of the lake, the only time that we really typically see it is end of August, September, maybe October. We've seen a little bit in November, but not very much. It depends on the rain.
I think, but I think it's warmer this year than it's most time. Especially if it's warmer this year and also.
I think, I think in 15 or no, 16, I think it was, end of July, we kind of started getting it, but that was a really hot year too.
Yeah.
And we had really low water levels that year.
So if I hear what you're saying, what, why don't we have a few people that know how to do the setchi test, temperature test? And those connect like a month and then have a reporting network to the state of Oregon to come out here and test it if there's a problem.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We have a few people that would test, like somebody at Ava, somebody at Nigels, somebody at Darling, somebody at Westlake that know how to do the setchi and the temperature test. If something gets out of, if we say, start seeing the blue green, then we have a network to contact the state for testing.
Yeah.
Yeah, report it then. So maybe work a simpler version and not go do the whole procedure and look for getting your own equipment and just have a short list and.
Just have people keep an eye on. I mean, because you can go out there, anything, take a temperature of the lake.
Right.
So much fish by.
Do you only measure surface depth? Is that all that we were reporting or did we do temperatures at specific depth?
We did specific depths.
Yeah.
So that's a little.
It's not terrible. I think last, I don't know, it was like February, March, somebody said, I think we have blue green algae. And I'm like, all the conditions are wrong for.
Right.
For anything toxic.
We did have, this left, the first of the year, we did have, over there by Jamie's house.
And really?
We had algae bloom.
In January? Well, you have algae bloom, but not cyanobacteria. That's the toxic stuff.
Right. It was about.
It's not actually algae. The blue green that's toxic is the bacteria that's growing and it requires much warmer, sunnier conditions. So.
But in the middle of the winter, we can figure out how come we're getting it.
You could have algae bloom, but if that was, same thing the voter reported and that's why they said, we don't recommend dogs drinking this, but it's not the, it's not the toxic bacteria, right? Ingested in large quantities will give you boops in technical terms, I think.
And I just had a side conversation with Joe, sorry. But I just told him if the Coast Guard would go out, come out for free and just check things every three months when that would be something that I think would be doable and be helpful and we wouldn't have to pay out many.
Can you take committee members? Can you take committee members on the boat?
Not, not for, under orders. Because I would, that'd be one of them.
But that, that would be a training event for you guys, right?
Yeah. So there's different mission categories and.
Where's the best training?
As one of them, I was trying to figure out, because there's the active side handles, certain things we handle, certainly we can't. Dogs that can't charge for anything.
So I just figured they don't have to do it like we do it, but they came out, you know, once a quarter during the nine months of the year that we're worried about. You don't have to come out during the winter. So it'd be three times a year.
Full cabin.
So.
Survival suits.
There we go.
Do it in the winter too, just to do it.
All the time.
Okay, do it. So I think we could do that. That would be great.
So is this, we're, you're going to explore that? You're going to.
Yeah, that's okay.
Text.
Okay.
Charge.
All right, let's do that. That's.
I mean, because we don't need to take an action, right? We can just continue this and then you can report back.
I think that's awesome.
Okay. No, it is. Any other comments? All right. Next item, 98 events. We had talked about, oh, sorry.
Well, did we want to, I know that Dujin talked about the name. Did we, does that matter at this point or?
I would say we can tailor it so we get more to reach them from the coast guard. How's that?
Sure.
Is that all right, Joe?
Sure.
Put it on anyone.
Maybe it's a promise. I didn't promise. You can come back if. Bullitt's sitting out there.
No, no. Because he is coastal. You good, Lila? You got enough info on that? All right. 98 events. We had talked about some events and we had some survey comments about events. So Lila's been beating at wishes for, uh, possible presenters and that sort of thing.
Yes. Um, I have talked to insurance people. I've talked to Edward Jones. Um, we tried to get somebody from Medicare here too. Um, but I did reach out to an attorney and she can do an event for us in April. A little far out, but so April 25th at one o'clock. Um, she'll do a presentation. Not sure exactly on what at this point, but, um, they've given her some ideas. So, yeah.
Like wills and trusts and things like that?
Uh huh. Yeah. And, and that was law and things like that. So.
So taking some of the comments from our survey, you know, in the past, we talked about triathlon. I don't think that was really for Dune City residents, right? When you look at our average age and, and the activities. So we're looking at, you know, wills and trusts and health and diet, that sort of thing. And, uh, so anybody keep going. That makes sense.
Well, and then the other one, uh, place that I reached out to was Peace Help. And they have a bunch of webinars, which I know you guys saw. And so, uh, they don't have anybody that will come out to present the information, but, uh, and these webinar, they actually have the slideshow. So we can do, we can have somebody do the presentation or we can do the presentation, um, bringing in these webinars that they have listed. They have all the information, just that they don't have anybody that will actually do it, deliver it personally.
So these would be like a lead discussion.
Yes.
We would welcome whoever wants that information and, uh, give them handouts or project it on the wall. Go through one of these, um, sessions.
And then my other question was, you know, how often do we want to do an event? Are we trying to do something, you know, once a quarter?
That's a good question.
Once every month? I mean, what is our goal?
Talked about a goal. I know I always look at the event center events and they go up and down, you know, you can get like, there's a whole bunch of senior living and diet and, um, and then there'll be a, you know, you get that monthly calendar. Some months there's nothing, some months there's like six. So I don't know. I, I think it would be great for people if you could plan something like every other month, we do one of these, you know, on last Thursday of the month or whatever it is. And see, it was like the newsletter, you know, you start with five people that the first newsletter. I was one of them and I had tracked articles, but I don't even know if that counts. But, you know, now what? We're like 80.
About, about that. I think we're like 76 sometimes.
Right. So, you know, you might have the first one, it's just four people and then they tell two people and they tell two people and pretty soon you, you know, we got a full room. So. It's like every other month, maybe a good start because it's not quarterly, just in a long cycle, right? Every other month and then adjust the sentences of it because game busters and monthly if you can get people, but.
Some of them are basically, I'd be trying to stay away from December with Christmas and.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Be strategic about the way I skip it. Yeah. And, and you could have topics in here that generate huge interest. The peace help was, there's no cost, right? You could do two of them. You could say, hey, we already got 20 people signed up. We're going to do it again tomorrow night or whatever.
They're just presentations that they provide as the.
Right. A lot of these are pretty simple to do. So, um, I think that's good. Like you got one for April, back up and say, let's pick, pick two and, you know, we'll do the announcement and, and see how it goes.
Do it a way of figuring out what people want. Through it, you're kind of shooting in the dark.
Right.
Like with the attorney, I think if you get a couple of them here, yeah, you could have to start asking.
Yeah. The other, and this was in our comments in the survey, there were some activity wise, just simple stuff like game night. Nobody said ping pong. We don't have a ping pong table, but, but a game night, I mean, stuff like that, deep, we have space. We could have any sort of public gathering here and the lights are on and, uh, we have parking, so.
And this seems very adult based. Are we going to do anything for youth or children? I mean, that's fairly important. I know we don't have a ton here, but there are some.
Yeah, I think we should also, because if you get the parent or if you get the team to come in or child.
Pretty good.
Parents come.
You going to be on the council next year in Alabama?
No, I'm going right out there.
I should have volunteered for it then, right?
Well, no, you're right. We, we have children right next door and they're busy almost every night in town, dance, horse view. They really aren't looking for anything.
Right.
They got dance, choir, soccer.
Yeah, but it's, I think just as a city offering that is good. I mean.
Well, maybe in the summer, like a rec, rec something.
Some recs.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just some, some food.
Because then the parents, that's just going to involve more people.
And that's just invite them all. I'd say, just bring your phone. We'll just sit here and ignore each other.
We'll talk to each other that way.
Yeah.
And what?
Hot chocolate.
At the end of our driveway, we have a basketball, but we installed that.
We.
That was installed by, uh, the Boy Scouts from my church that installed that and made that park area at the end.
Okay.
So why that one home uses it all and their kids, that's really this committee.
Right.
Basketball area.
Good.
And so you can say, hey, we'll have a pickup basketball game for the kids or something and use the park area.
Yeah, three on three, like they do, because they have new sanctions once again in Florence, the three on three at the Elks, but do that and do like a barbecue with it. Just something fun. You have to draw everyone in, in the beginning. So we got to see this. We got to get people excited.
Right.
Or it doesn't matter. So it's just a way to get more all generations in. Let's go for that.
All right.
The end of the discussion. I, I just think you gotta, you gotta find something that's gonna, that is, is going to interest the uh, generation that's in the, the mid twenties and, and early thirties, so that have younger kids. Because there has gotten to be since COVID, uh, a ton of families that have absolutely nothing to do in this whole area.
Yeah.
I mean, Florence provides absolutely nothing for that generation. Um, Dune City provides absolutely nothing for that generation. Um, the closest you have anything is basically Eugene. So, I mean, I don't. Bowling, there's not bowling anymore. There's, there's just basically nothing for these generations. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna maintain or build that group, even, you know, as Dune City, we need to even work with the city of Florence and maybe the city of Florence needs to lighten up a little bit and try to figure out how to get some more activities for those generations.
Peace Help recruits married people for that reason, because the single ones won't stay.
Cause what?
Single people will not stay in this area. They'll do their contract and leave. They recruit married people because they'll stay.
Well, married people won't stay because there's nothing here for them to do.
Once I know married, love it here.
The, uh, like Peace Help, I mean, they, they contracted most of these, uh, uh, traveling nurses because that's all they can get. And the majority of them come here, they stay for, uh, their three or four days that they're, they're contracted to do their job. And then they go back to where they came from. And then they come back for the three or four days that they're contracted to do their job and they don't stay there. But there, there's no housing for them to start with. There's, there's no affordable housing for them for seconds. And there's nothing for their kids to do. And the school system doesn't provide the necessities that they want for their kids. Also, I mean, there's.
The ones I know.
Big keys right there.
The ones I know in Florence that are here, I would dispute that. They're pretty happy here.
What's that?
The ones I know that are married young are fairly happy here with their kids and their family. They have a lot for them to do, but, uh, the singles, we provide nothing for. They'll have to live in Eugene.
I've got, let's see, one, two, three. I've got three of my own kids that are in that age generation that, uh, would probably leave here if they didn't work for us. Because there's nothing for them to do and there's nothing for their kids.
Well, we'll surprise you because that's experience. All right. Any other comments on that? We're going to, uh, work out.
When I was a comment, I like, maybe we were saying it gets real standing in the, in the winter for profits and, and things. We could do a real quick, uh, RMD calculation. How to figure your own required minimum distribution based on last year's balances. Oh, that's a good one. So save people some, some money and give them an idea, you know, if they want to mess with it or whatever. Cause they can bite you. If you miss it, 50% penalty.
Oh boy.
Fifty. So if you were required to withhold X amount of dollars and you didn't, it's perhaps 50% penalty. So it's hard to get a hold of accounts and things that kind of years. So it, it is what you want helpful thing for us to do. There's one other, one was saying the one is. So of course, that's the usual disclaimer in there, I think it was, check the 6th of the year, whatever. But that's significant.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on to item 10, the chapter 91. Press map, the news chapter. Relax from Chicago. But mark it up. Anybody have comments? Just want to start.
So the workshop mentioned lighting in recent.
Yeah.
So is the intent to add lighting to this?
I think that was one of the questions. Should there be something, um, as about, you know, shouldn't go beyond your property line or, uh, or adopt the dark skies kind of policy with, you know, should lean down.
Right.
And not horizontal or whatever.
I don't think any dark skies. And what they could ask, but.
Yeah. So, yeah, we don't, um, we got an email the other day that said, you need to enforce the lighting ordinance. It's like, we don't, I don't know lighting ordinance. I'm not sure what you're referring to. Uh, and we have gotten comments like, I can see lights on the other side of the lake. But a lot of the other side of the lake is not within the safety limits anyway. We don't regulate that, but anyway, so it is a sensitive spot for some folks. Um, both directions, right? I mean, it's also the safety and security thing, um, to light up around your home. So.
We had, yeah, we had an attempt several years ago. We defined or otherwise come up with an ordinance on light. And it came through the planning commission. And it was absolutely absurd. And we have people, I mean, I'm, uh, because of the Capitol Clement, Clements here, I have a dark sky. But at the same time, I have a law enforcement background and I know the problems that lack of light can cause. Well, I know the damage you can do to your body in this area trying to get around.
Yeah.
In the dark. And we have more people here. We looked at, well, okay, gee whiz, let's just name the light straight down. Well, that's not real helpful if, if, uh, you got zombies coming up the driveway to come take your stuff out of your garage. And you've got the outer foot or two illuminated. Um, and you ask any, any law enforcement agency, they're going to, they're going to tell you the biggest deterrents for theft and keeping bad guys away in general is going to be light. So then you get down to this situation where, okay, what is the light? How do you measure it? That can be done, but I don't think we have any instrumentation here to do that. And, you know, I can take a little, uh, but I have one right here. That's, you know, so it's flashlight. Now I live on white. And this puts out, that's to nothing, but it is LED. And I've had people say, well, that's, that's intrusive. Clear on the other side of the lake, this little light can be seen. So there is a scene of light. In other words, you see something. What is it actually doing? You know, what, to what extent and where do you draw this line? And then at the same time, the planning commission through this one individual had come up with uh, a, a definition. There was one candle tower or two candle tower. When only candles hitting your total pitch bar. If that can be seen against a piece of cardboard, one foot away, you're violation. Well, that's absolutely assumen. And that, we were asked the voter. And, and to make that the standard. And so really since then, for several years, we don't have any. Because we've chosen to live in the rural area here, what is technically the time world. And again, I'd like to be in pitch black too, but just from the safety standpoint, the best standpoint, security. You've got to have some, but, but there's a. And I found, and I had, I had a lady complain about mine who was clear across the lake. And it turned out that what she was complaining about was the light was visible. Now, it was facing totally away from her house, directly at my house. Because it eliminated the area in front of my house. Again, we don't want the bad guy particularly coming in, or at least my house. So the fact that she could, she came over the house, I have a mobile. And she looked it all over and turned lights on and off and, and, um, she saw, well, it's not even 20 feet around. Well, could you aim it down? Well, yeah, I can aim it down to the point that it becomes useless to me for the purposes of security, safety, everything like the art. It's a, it's, it's a really difficult situation. That's, that's all I understand. But I like my own house. I love the, okay, the nine, see, that's a milky way. We are in rural area, we're not in downtown LA. And a lot of folks around here seem to come.
Thank you.
There's one thing to be, if there are, there's definitions in here.
Yeah.
I mean, we've been rewriting a lot of definitions. It's got like the SPR, increased.
It's got like the SPR, and we've got, someone's got a, they've cross-refered those, and that. There's a lot of laws, you guys know, are all using different definitions for the same thing, and that's pretty. That's one that needed to be added here. Uh. Like the unlicensed short-term rental, there's a couple of things that probably should be added.
Right.
In the code. And then just outside of, um. The light, just instances, there's. The light one is, which is three, and it's Bravo, ninety, zero, two, Bravo. It says that. Food enforcement person will determine what some of these things are based on their own opinion of. Is it injurious, and that's a word, or detrimental to public safety?
Yeah.
You need more definition around that, because it could be totally subjective, all of us here, all have a different opinion of what's dangerous or not.
It's subjective, more.
There's a whole bunch of stuff in here, like a. Vehicle with equipment. That's not guarded, what the heck's that mean?
Right.
There's tons of work trucks and equipment all over the stuff.
Those there are like.
And there's some that's like on your personal property, why would your kid be coming on my property?
Right.
This is just, and not a badly, horribly written, so I think it's just.
That's what I thought could be stricken, because.
A bunch, yeah. Or refined, to be more specific, it's really broad and, and just opens up craziness, in some ways.
And when these things come over review. In a good first pass, always a good lawyer. Are there any obvious things that are just not enforceable and or definitions that are not going to work?
One that I would like be looked at, I know Rich does too, is the noise one, number six, that's. Never been enforced, that, that.
It needs some.
And so it needs some.
What time do you time it, soon?
It's from seven PM to seven AM.
Well, there's one here that says from seven AM to seven PM audible for a hundred yards.
I know.
Well, that's. It's not a medical standard, right?
Right.
I mean, unless we have the calibrated.
Some people here check a hundred yards for sixteen yards, so.
You're not being a smart one.
No, I know what you mean. It's like, do your pick, right? I'm here to tell you. If California wants to push electric blowers and, and weed eaters and all that stuff. I, I can still hear those electric ones for more than a hundred yards, so.
Yeah.
It's, it doesn't, uh, that just doesn't work.
It slipped the cardboard one foot away from the camera, you gotta be kidding.
That whole paragraph means.
Yeah, completely. Redone. I mean, it should be basically ten PM to eight AM. Uh, you know, any further than a hundred yards, just idle contact, but.
We had mentioned doing business hour noise and then after hour noise.
Right.
So there's different standards.
That's a typical, right, work hours are like seven to. Five, eight to five, or seven to five, and then quiet hours would be like ten to seven. They're two different things, right? So one is when you're scheduling work, if you have a contractor, rolling work or whatever, you tell people, those are work hours. And then quiet hours would be. I, I wouldn't put that. Anyone, if it's audible at a distance, it would have to say something like, you know, measurable, sixty decibels at a hundred feet below the property line or something, some measurable number. So we could. We could buy a hundred dollar sound pressure meter and actually be able to duplicate it.
Well, they, they say that the dunes is nothing over ninety-eight dB.
Yeah.
At, at like a hundred yards, but yet we can hear all the HMVs. Clear over here that's five hundred yards away, or a mile.
Quiet hours as well.
They don't, they don't honor, you know, I know, honor, but, yeah.
They're out there till midnight.
No, that's two AM.
Yeah, way.
Like, I'm as far away from as I can get, I can hear them at two AM.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, we have an air, goes mountain's better and sings, you can hear them like.
They sing well.
Ten o'clock at night, okay, at least I can hear it, it was out in Sharon City.
Okay.
That's, I think, decibel, and the thinking is, maybe you're the crackle way to enforcing a thing.
Right, yeah.
It's not, it's, it's.
Right, right, we need measurable, it's right, like, like a light meter, you know? The other side of the right way away from your property line, you know, whatever it is, two foot candles or whatever, but, um. So, yeah, I don't, maybe we should just start with a search of other model ordinances. Um. Cause even the penalty section.
For a rural area?
Yeah, we should just start with small towns and, and look for something similar, or weed out anything that. Uh, that just completely doesn't apply.
Don't let it form.
No, I'm worried about that.
Why not just let the people work it out between themselves, that's what works the best, that's why a lot of people have moved here. Was to get away from that.
So that means I can take a shotgun to the light from the neighbors?
So you don't, if you have an issue with your neighbor, you're welcome to discuss it with your neighbor, you don't have to bring your ordinance in.
Yeah.
But if you can't come to, uh, a solution, at least now you can have somebody for that.
I'm sure someone stabbed on the beach in Florence because their interview was so loud and offended someone who was sitting there trying to throw lights at him. He's balls dropped in a beach, so it is a real problem for people, and I don't think we should solve it ourselves, because I don't like shotguns or people being stabbed.
Well, as long as people are together, and all, they're gonna get shotgunned and.
But it's very nice to have an ordinance that you can go, hey, I can deal with this by reporting. The ordinance, rather than having to deal with it yourself by someone who is irrational.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's just too much control for. An rural area like ours, and it just, it goes against what these people want.
It's already.
I know that. I know.
It needs a, it needs a clean. It's scary, it's the penalty section, number six, ninety-one point nine nine. It says that any person violating any of the per se provisions, ninety-one point zero one. You'd be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor by the appropriate city authority.
Right.
And are we allowed to?
No.
That sounds like illegal, right?
It is.
And.
You're not being someone guilty of a crime.
The, uh, and it, and it says that it's both criminal and civil, and it can be.
Right.
So typically, a code enforcement or a city employee could enforce civil. But, yeah, you can't say, I've decided you're guilty of a misdemeanor, because that's, I think, up to six months in jail.
Right.
And, I mean.
I'll tell you.
You can't do that.
Well, your bench class sends them like, Jeff.
Get your gavel out.
Yeah, I got gavel. That's, that's the first pass of the lawyer that I.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, it's underlying that.
I think it can be both.
Which is it?
And it can't, and it's second, whichever applies.
No.
This would be civil.
Right.
You know, it's, and, um, it, it's pretty tough that we're, we're looking at trying to create ordinances that would be enforceable. When. Uh, government can't enforce. Basically, anything at this point in time, look at Lane County, they can't enforce ninety-nine percent of all the laws that they have on the books, let alone. Take care of vagrants that are stepping out into the middle of one-on-one and throwing rocks and stuff at cars passing by, and they won't even come take care of it. You know, it's, it's pretty tough to sit here and say that we're gonna create an ordinance that's gonna take care of something that people can rely on. That we can't even enforce.
We can't enforce it because we can't afford it.
We can't enforce it because we can't afford it, we can't afford the law enforcement.
We don't have jails.
I'm here to tell you, the sheriff's office is not coming out here for this.
No, for sure.
Guarantee you. The only thing they're coming out here for is a gunshot and somebody dead. And we all know that.
So what would you recommend?
Huh?
So what would you recommend?
I don't know. I mean.
No, hell, like, it's a difficult problem, but we can either try to do the best we can with this, or we can throw it away.
But what does Lane County have on the books already?
For what?
Ten M D D.
Oh.
Is, is there a noise ordinance?
Yeah.
Do they have a light measure rule?
I don't think they do. Lane County's already on the books.
But, I mean, they won't even go out and their own noise ordinance.
Yeah, but why would you go, why would you go any further than what they have on the books already?
I guess we need to look at what they have.
They may have something personally acceptable, and we don't need to add.
Yeah.
But that's why I say, we could do a document search, because there's, there's better language out there.
If they have it on the books, just get rid of the whole thing.
Well, you can't get rid of the whole thing, you have to say, the Dunes City adopts Lane County's.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Default to Lane County.
Lane County man, man, land management, who handles all that. So, let's do that, and we'll bring it back with some examples for a. Pick the best or something, be, uh, rather than go through this line by line.
And ask a lawyer, maybe?
But that, they're asking a lawyer. Um, I, well, probably we need to say, I like that and I don't like that before we ever cross, I don't want to give them an open-ended.
Okay.
It's expensive, we just want him to, you know, just sit and field ideas, but if we say. Here's the, you know, we want to take six of these out, here's the ten things we want to do.
I was more, I was going to just strike anything that's like, this is, this is a waste of paper.
And we get asked in that too, because I think.
Yeah.
A law firm represents like twelve different cities.
Yeah.
So a lot of times. They're very familiar with other cities too, and going, you know, here's a really good one, you know, it's a year old, you just went through this whole process with whoever. Um, so we've gotten really good advice from them sometimes, but one that keeps coming up is the feeding deer. We have signs if they don't feed a deer, but the, this actually says, anything, deer, raccoons, bear, cougar, coyote, or wolf. Um. And why is it even here when all the wild animals are regulated by the state authority? Um, we have absolutely no jurisdiction on wild animals. We, we can decide we want jurisdiction on domestic animals. If we want to get into animal control specifically, there's one question on bark of dogs, but. Um. Somebody called the other day and said, what do I do if I know somebody fed a deer? Said, I'm telling them to quit it. I, what are we really gonna do with it? Yeah, and, and it doesn't say feed of what, I have a neighbor that has a bird feeder, and his deer hang out of the bird feeder, because he gets the assorted beans and oats and all that. And, um. I am guilty of letting the dandelions grow sometimes, and the deer love them, and I didn't watch deer walk around the backyard. Not feeding them on purpose, but I don't care.
We don't want our grass in the backyard, because they come back there and eat the grass, you know?
It's just good, right?
They are blackberries, what are you talking about?
They put blackberries too.
So, yeah, I try to decide, like, am I guilty of feeding the deer, I just let them pass through, I don't, I don't care for eating something. Other than my apple tree. I remember, it's probably that stinky stuff now, because they chewed all the leaves off the whole sap one last week.
I remember when they put that ordinance in place, and Tom can correct me, because he was probably here, I wasn't here at the time. But there was a real problem with it, a number of citizens that were literally. Out there. Directly feeding the deer, I mean.
Like popcorn all over, right next to your wife?
Corn, that, I mean.
They had seven deer sitting out the lawn.
It, it was, it was bad, and number one, it, it creates. Bad. Genes in a deer, because you're feeding them stuff that they shouldn't be eating, so they look nasty.
They have cripplets, so they can't feed them.
They, they, uh, uh, Department Fish and Wildlife was like, it's in Dune City, we're not coming there to do anything, we don't care, it's not our problem.
Yeah.
And so that, that was the problem, or the reason that it was kind of created, was because Fish and Wildlife basically didn't want to do anything about it. And yet it was creating such an issue, and such a, such a problem, we as.
My minority, and we don't do anything about it.
The, the, the problem was, I mean, there were so many deer. That are being drawn to Dune City, that it really got overrun, but now. Uh, there's, on the average, of three cougars running together in Dune City that are really taking a toll on the deer population, so.
It fixes it up.
I mean, I don't know what you do with that, neither.
Nothing. That's how it works.
You can't enforce it.
Well, that, did anybody tell not lying again to the deer?
They're not citizens of Dune City.
We didn't get our neighbor to quit feeding plums out of her hand to the deer, but. The deer got hit by a car right out here from, in Dune City, oh, the one she was feeding. She made it a little too tame.
Yeah, they were a number that they'll walk right into.
So you made, it was put in there for a good reason, but it made nothing useful.
It's not, I'm not saying that it's not even useful, I'm just saying, who's gonna enforce it? You know?
I think it's to remind citizens that they have the ordinance, that's all we do.
Yeah. I mean. Uh, the State Patrol, or Fish and Wildlife, who is the State Patrol, they don't care, yeah, they're not coming out here to enforce it.
No, they wouldn't force it, and when there were so many deer, we got them out to do a, to do a deer count, because. Citizens thought there were more deer in Dune City than the. Normal for any place else in Oregon, and it turned out we had, uh, the same number as anywhere else in the state of Oregon for population.
It's up and down, whether it's dry years, wet years. Weird stuff.
I mean, you, you basically got to prove that that individual's doing it, you got to photograph it, and you got, you just got to take, I don't know. I didn't know they liked popcorn.
Your deer.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll look for some. We'll look for some information, and, um. They went through U D E N S, it's one page. Um, a very important thing sent it, it was sent it ago.
Wow, it just shows, we have seven.
People think when they have the right laws, they have to be long, it, it, you know, it's lean and, and straightforward, and they use the right words. You have to measure certain things, but.
Yeah, we have some really picky stuff, like, where did we find this?
Right, yeah. They feed some lumber containing nails or scattered objects, that's a manner to create a safety hazard. Is there a safe way to scatter lumber with nails pointing out? Um. And some of it's only if it's a danger to children or pets. Inoperable machinery that's a safety hazard to children or pets.
Right.
Not just the public at large, but you'd have to decide. That it's a pet or child hazard. Um, they're being a child hazard.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's, if anybody with an old chainsaw has got an inoperable piece of, or a start. Um, so anyway, well, you're right. If your genes is one page, one there's an easy solution.
Yeah.
Um, does there say anything about the deer?
Yeah. And that I saw.
Okay. All right. I think that is all about our. I mean, you look at some of this stuff, you're getting me.
Yeah, it's me saying, just to watch me specifically.
All right. Let's go on to item eleven, for the good of the earth, Rich, what do you got?
I've sort of looked it. Uh. I don't know, the dam is fully operational, has been, has been open. You know, but my people are severely concerned that the dam has not been operated properly again. And I don't know where their concerns are, I mean, the, the lake level has been maintained and, and.
What, what's the lake level right now?
Do you know what it is now?
Um, lake level right now? It is, uh, last I read it, which is yesterday, was seven-seven, I haven't read it today.
Okay.
So it was high, was high for last week, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
It was thirteen inches of rain.
It was like eight foot, uh, six or eight foot eight.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it wasn't even really a concern. Um.
It's been running wide over.
Wall.
It's been running wide open for almost a month.
I like your reader board.
I like your reader board.
There's, you know, I mean.
Looking though, right?
Whoa, one, the other one, it's at the very end down by where Jamie has.
They'll put it in there, but it was.
Eight foot.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it was wide open at, uh, seven foot one. Before the rain started. So, at seven foot one, with the dam wide open, and all the rain that we've had, and we topped out at, uh. Well, I can tell you.
My, my ramp was getting pretty close to level.
You, you know, I mean, everybody thinks that, uh, everything should be, that just be, you, you open the dam, that, boom, it should be gone. Well, there's, there's a few things, there's a few things that need to be attributed to here, okay? Number one is you got seven hundred and eighty thousand acres of drains that are draining into this, and when you get an inch of rain, times, uh, seven hundred and eighty thousand acres. That, that's a ton of water. Number two, and the number one problem with this whole, this whole thing, is there's so many logs in this outlet. That, that, they are attributing to making a dam when the dam is wide open.
That, that was my concern, is that the river flow is significantly slower, uh, from the bridge out, but I think it's because they got that log down there tied in.
Log? We're talking logs.
Well, yeah, they're not down all the way throughout.
There, there's tons of them. I mean, I've been down through there, there's lots of them. And so, until we take care of those logs. And, and the state came and, uh, the sheriff's department came and talked to me about the one that's right below the, uh.
Campground?
The campground there, and they, they want to get in there, and I told them I would get them in there so that they could get that up. And so I asked him, I said, well, that's fine and dandy, but I said, what about the. And so I asked him, I said, well, that's fine and dandy, but I said, what about the sixty-five or seventy others that are impeding the process of everything that's from Dune City down to there, and they go, well, we don't have any complaints from the kayakers on that. Quoked. We don't have any complaints on the kayakers from that. So they're gonna go take care of the one that's below the bridge, or below the dam, because they've had too many complaints from the kayakers on it. Which, fine, that's, that's great.
What, what about the one by Taiyi? They're not gonna take care of that one?
No. No. Um, we do have, and I do have it in my personal email at my business, that, uh, we've had permission from the state to, and there should be an email right here in this office, that, uh, we've had permission from the state to go down through there and cut any logs barring, you've got to leave five feet from the edge of the water level, you cannot cut it, five feet from the, the bank. But you can take everything out in between that, all the way down through there. And they said, have fun, have at it. So we've got the permission to go ahead and do that. Um, and I've talked to the sheriff, I've talked to the State Patrol, and their whole thing is, is, we don't have the money to do it. It's absolutely no different than Lane County saying, we don't have the money to fix a road. The state, nobody's got the money, and they're not gonna put money into this stuff. So, at, at some point, we're gonna have to get together as a community. If we want the lake to be operated in a, in a little better fashion, and get some more drainage out of it, and get a lot of those logs out there. And until we do that, it's not gonna change, and I don't care who you are, or what you think you know about it, until you get those logs out, it's not gonna change. So.
There's an activity.
It'll only drain what it's gonna drain with all those logs, basically acting as a dam all the way down through there.
There, there's a couple of them, they're so big, they're dangerous, there's a lot of them, you can take it out pretty simply, but if you want a tie-in, they're huge.
The, the, the water level needs to be down a little more, um, and, uh, there's some of them that are so big that, uh, you're right, I mean, um, they, they need to be dealt with by people that know what's at Dune. And, uh, to do that, there you go, I mean.
One thing is, why don't we ask Boomer to put it in his infrastructure bill?
Yeah, I mean, if you're a professional lawyer, you know that, I mean.
It's infrastructure, yeah. But Boomer's bill, get some money to pull those trees.
How many pages do we have to fill out on paper?
I know, I know lawyers that.
It's just the request to him, and it's actually a form that's supposed to go to the state, he said, I want yours to come to me, you know, he wants anybody that he represents. So, you know, I mean, for him, he likes it in regular guy terms, right, it's that, it, it's completely affects the drainage of, um, the lake and, and the community.
The, the Taiyi lock has changed the river flow, because I've watched it every year since two thousand and sixteen, it's different this year, above the log, it... I'm always below the log, but it's different.
That, that tree has got to be six foot around. And if it, if it ever decides to give way, I mean, what's it gonna do to that bridge?
Is that the one that blew down?
Yeah, about, uh, three years ago or so, four years ago.
Because they took.
Yeah, it's about, or you can go under, right, it's that, right, under. Sometimes, yeah.
Because the people who bought the property across the way were, there were so many trees, those all were vulnerable, and fell into the outlet. And we all said that was going to happen, and it happened, they did it anyway, there's only one line of trees.
That, that's, and it's a problem. But, you know, you, you gotta take care of the rest of that stuff too. You know, and I mentioned to the sheriff, I said, well, you know, the logs are one thing, but I said, you guys continue to allow the ATVers to push the sand down into the corner of that, uh, river down there, that's blocking the river up, and I said, they keep pushing the sand, pushing the sand, pushing the sand. I said, before long, you're gonna have that whole thing blocked out down there by the sand. I said, then what are you gonna do?
Right.
He goes, I don't know. So, I don't know, we're... You know, we've, we've got complete, uh, documentation of exactly what's going on with the dam, and how it's being operated, and the state is extremely happy with what's going on. Uh, Fish and Wildlife is extremely happy, there was a meeting with Fish and Wildlife a week and a half ago, two weeks ago. Uh, they're happy with what's going on. The water master was extremely happy with the water lake levels all summer long, and has been extremely happy with them all fall. And, uh, you know, as long as we're pleasing those people, um, there's somebody from the Dune City area that just keeps calling, keeps calling, keeps calling, and uh, you know, is kind of athorn, but, I, that's just kind of the way it is, but... Because every time he calls, or she calls, whoever it is, uh, we get a call. And, uh, they're going, hey, what you doing, what's going on? Why are you not doing this? And it's like, well, we are doing that.
That's good.
All right.
Great.
Bye, Jeff. Go, anything else? All right, um, I mean, I consider this adjourned at, uh...
Emotion to adjourn?
So I need to motion.
Emotion to adjourn.
Sorry, all in favor of adjourned? Any opposed? That's who you asked. All right, now we're adjourned. Six minutes fell.